Well, welcome everyone. This is our first remote participation meeting of the Beverly School Committee. This is the school committee of the whole meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 28th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. We are following guidance from Governor Baker's office that a quorum need not be physically present. And in our day jobs, a few of us have used some online tools. We are being provided an online tool as an educational organization free of charge, which has a few technical limitations. So tonight, we are recording this meeting and we will present it as an MP4 file on our district website as soon as reasonably possible. We are going to endeavor for future meetings to allow full public participation and access to any remote participation meetings that we may need to have. I'd like to do a roll call to tell everyone online who is present, who may not be seeing the video feed right now. We have, is Kelly Ferretti on the line? Let me just double check.
No, see her, Rachel. If you want to just keep going, I'll be your moderator.
Thank you.
Was it Erin Brown, maybe?
Okay. How about Karen Robinson? We saw you join. Everyone is by default unmute. You can unmute yourselves, but I believe I see you connected. Just confirm that you can hear us and that you can speak with us. Karen will come back to you. Kimberly Quelo, I believe you are recording this open meeting.
I'm here.
Okay. If you could mute your line, you have some background noise.
Trying to figure out how to do that.
Okay. I've muted your line, Kimberly, for now, and you'll need to unmute yourself if you want to speak again. And I think I just saw Kelly Ferretti join us. Kelly, we're doing a roll call and we're recording this open meeting as an MP4.
I don't see your audio yet.
No audio yet. Okay. Larynda Visnick, you're present.
I'm here.
Present. And John Mulady, you're present.
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill, are you on the line with us yet?
I don't see him, Rachel.
Okay. We also are joined this evening by Dr. Chirocek and Ms. Jean Sherburne, Dr. Dorothy Flaherty, Ms. Lisa Oliver, Ms. Julie Smith, Mr. John Harmon, Ms. Gabrielle Montivecki, Ms. Erin Brown. These are a number of our district administrators. We appreciate your time. And we have Dr. Deborah Lay and Ms. Beth Splansky, Ms. Donna Bergeron. I believe that is our roll call. Is there anyone else that's joined our line that has not been acknowledged? Okay. Well, with that, I would like to welcome all again. And as I mentioned, when we get Ms. Ferretti, we'll just do a confirmation that she can hear our audio. And the mayor, they're looking like they might have some technical challenges. Okay. First order of business, I did want us each to just take a moment and recite our pledge of allegiance. I will leave it if you'd like to come off mute, so I'm not talking alone. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. Okay. So that was a technical challenge. Obviously, it is a little difficult when we have multiple people speaking. So for this meeting tonight, could we use the convention of a hand raise? And rather than try to teach you how to raise your hand in this digital world, you can just stick your hand in front of your camera or unmute yourself. And I will notice that. Or my moderator friend, Ms. Visnick, can help me if we see people wanting to speak. Really, our real agenda item this evening is to get some updates from the superintendent. She has listed a number of items to give us updated. And first and foremost, I'm excited to learn more about Beverly Keeps Learning, the initiative to help our kids avoid learning loss. So with that, I will let you take control of the screen. I'm going to stop my share. It should be at the bottom. It's a green button that says screen share, and you can just share your web browser. Great.
Did that work?
It's yes.
All right. Very good. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you. I apologize for the Google slideshow that I'm going to show, but I thought it would help best keep my thoughts in a clear stream. So much has happened in the past six days that I wanted to make sure that I organized it for you in a way that everyone could understand and see what's been going on. So I do have some people here who are going to help me this evening and be able to answer questions. First, a big thanks to Doc Flaherty because she really helped me a lot with this Google slideshow today. I have Jean Sherburne. She's here to answer any questions about the business aspect. And Bethany Splansky is here particularly to answer any questions we have about special ed. And I hate to do this to you at the last minute, Bethany, but I did throw a slide in there. So I'm going to ask for you to speak to it when it comes up. It's just based off some of the information you shared with special educators today. So hopefully you can just talk to that for us. So to start, here are the items that I... Rachel, how do I get rid of... I think I can minimize this. Yep, I did. Thank you. The first thing I have, this is just an overview of all of the things that I hope to touch upon tonight. The first one is the Beverly Keeps Learning Initiative. We launched our website. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. I wanted to talk a little bit about our school lunch and breakfast distribution, what we've done to date and sort of where we hope we keep going. Jean is going to join me in the conversation a little bit about some of the continuity of payroll and some of our business concerns. Everyone knows that there's a lot of really big changes happening. And so we just want to address for all of you, let you know where we stand. And then finally, some final thoughts from me around the extended closure and where I think we might be going with this or not, where I don't know anything about where we're going with this. So let me start. How do I go to the next slide?
Should be able to hit the spacebar.
Nope.
For the forward arrow.
Neither the... How about return, enter? Nope.
Not able to control that.
I was able to go the first time, but somehow I seem to have gotten locked out. What if I do this? Try it again and get it back up. Yep, there we go. All right. So the first item that I have here really is our Beverly Keeps Learning. So as you know, when we originally closed schools on Thursday for Friday, which technically for us will be counted as a snow day. But we made that decision because there were so many things up in the air. We had so many questions and we weren't quite sure what direction we were going in. And we wanted to make sure we made the decision that was really prudent for the students in our district. So however, following that, the governor, first of all, the commissioner held a conference call with all of us. There was no specific guidance from the Department of Ed at that time, largely because the commissioner doesn't have the authority to close schools. Only the governor and the Department of Public Health have the authority to actually close schools. As a result, or a local decision. So as a result, we came together with the North Shore Roundtable, which are the superintendents from all of our surrounding districts. We spent a lot of time consulting and talking about what we would do. And we decided to, in concert, all work together and come up with one common decision. And at that point, we made the decision to close for two weeks. Following that, things were happening rapidly every hour. There was a new decision coming along and we had to kind of shift and turn. In the end, we ended up, the governor held his conference, has closed schools for three weeks at least. Originally, in his press conference, he announced that it would be April 7th that was the return date. He has sort of stepped that back a little. And now the language is you cannot return before April 6th. However, I think that there's a lot of people that are thinking that April 6th would be, we would be very lucky if we were back in school by April 6th. So that's just sort of the background, how we got. At that point, on that day that we decided for that Friday closure, we brought the leadership team together and put our heads together and said, what are we going to do? How are we going to provide our students at least with some resources and some information that will keep them going over what originally was a two-week period? And our conversation and discussion talked led us to thinking about what kinds of resources could we put together? How could we make sure that for two weeks, kids had some guidance around some websites that were vetted by our teachers or some guidance around reading and making sure that they were able to keep reading? We ended up, at that point in time, determining that we would try to put together a one message from the whole district so that we weren't eight schools presenting eight different sets of information to parents, which we thought would be confusing. And we put the effort together to start building our Beverly Keeps Learning website. As we did that, we knew we needed a few things that we had to keep in consideration. At the forefront of everything that we were thinking was equity. How would we be able to make sure that all of our students, all of our students, whether they had access to digital resources, didn't have access? If there were concerns around any of those things, how would we make sure that we could reach them? And so several things came together. The first thing that we thought about was how do we make some hard copies for people so that people that have really and honestly don't have access to any digital resources would have something? Remember, we were planning for a two-week period at that time, not necessarily three weeks or longer. But the teachers came together and said, okay, well, we can put together some packets that we can distribute to the schools. Additionally, we had some concerns about if students may have had, be able to access technology, but they didn't bring their iPad home from school or they don't have a technology in their house. So we put together an opportunity to distribute some iPads for grades five and six. And our elementary principals are working still with families to take a look at that as we go. So just as some updates on how we did. Today, we did a K-4 packet distribution at lunch at each one of our lunch distribution sites. We distributed iPads at the middle school in a very organized fashion where parents were able to come at specific times and retrieve the iPad for their child. And at the same time, we launched our Week One enrichment resources for elementary, middle, and high school. That was launched on what we have kind of been calling the Beverly Keeps Learning site. Here's a kind of an example. I hope some of you have had an opportunity to take a look at it. But if you haven't, I would encourage you to do so. Our site here provides access to parents and guardians, students and educators, just some information and updates. So the purpose of this site, and I have said it in my communications home to parents, I have been communicating home with parents almost daily. But I've reiterated to them, right now, the only guidance that we have and the only authority that we have is to provide enrichment and/or review activities for students. We are not supposed to be progressing forward in the progression of skills learning. We are providing reinforcement and enrichment activities. As you can see, parents and guardians have some guidance here as to, you know, how they can help, what they can do, what some good ideas over the course of these three weeks for making and helping their child build some structure in their day. And individually, we first have put together pre-K to 2, 3 to 4, middle school and high school. And these are all schools together, a combined effort of all the schools to provide enrichment. So right now, in Beverly, all of our elementary students and our preschool students are receiving the same enrichment materials. We wanted to sort of avoid any confusion around what Cove might be doing or Hannah might be doing. As we progress, if we're given the green light to open up with more specific skill-driven and progression-driven learning, our principals and teacher leaders and teachers are building individual websites for each school at the elementary level. So come next week, if we're given the go-ahead to move forward, they'll be more specific to the buildings, what's going on, the learning that can happen. And they'll have much more contact directly with their own classroom teachers and their own principal. So we look forward to kind of launching that in a week. The principals are working really hard on those sites.
Sue, I think we have some questions on the line. Would you mind if we just pause here for a second?
Perfect. Please, just let me just jump in anytime.
Sure. Ms. Visnick?
Chirocek, I just think it would be helpful for all those people who are going to listen to this recording, just like usually they're watching from home, if you clarified the direction, right? You said we're just doing enrichment. And so from where are you getting that or are we getting that directive?
So we're getting it largely from the Department of Ed. And we're also governed by laws and regulations in the state which don't allow us to provide learning opportunities for some students and not all. And so we have some complications around students with special needs and the ability for them to access. If we were to move ahead with new learning, there may be some people that are not able to move forward with us. And we don't want to exclude any of our learners in Beverly. A little bit later in the presentation, Bethany's going to talk with us about what that means, why I've been so specific. Or if you'd like, I could jump ahead to that question right now if you want to hear from Bethany. Would you like me to do that?
No, I'm fine. You can go in regular order. I didn't know that that was coming up, or I wouldn't ask the question.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
And I have a quick question. You mentioned the distribution of the five and six iPads. Were any seventh and eighth grade iPads left behind?
Yes, and those were distributed today as well. Parents, well, they were, I think, and I think we have some data on how many... Do we... Doc, did we get the data on how many iPads were distributed?
Oh, she's muted. Let me see if I can unmute her.
There was just over 200 for the fifth and sixth grade. And then seventh and eighth graders were allowed to come this afternoon if they had left something at the school. So we didn't get numbers on the seventh and eighth grade, but we do know that there was over 200 iPads distributed to fifth and sixth graders.
Okay. Are we going to do some follow-up to make sure that everyone was able to, that needed an iPad or work on just double-checking the interest?
Yeah, that's a great question. We actually were fortunate because one of the things that we will be able to do, based upon who signs on, we'll know who signed on. And so that's one of the ways we've been able to track about how many devices we might need. So that's how the elementary schools are using the opportunity to figure out who might need digital access at home in elementary. Because in some of our apps like ST Math or Lexia, if we can see how many students have signed on. So as an example, and Dr. Lay is with us, but I think she cited that they did a... They looked at their data and there were 420 students at Ayers and only 64 had not, in the closure time, had not signed on to ST Math. So that gives us a good number that we know that only 64 of them hadn't signed on. And now we do a deeper dive. Did they not sign on because they didn't want to do ST Math or because they don't have access? But it makes it much more manageable for us to dig deep and find out which of our families are still lacking access digitally. And so we can work on a plan for the elementaries as well. And at the middle school, we can do the same thing. When they sign into their Google classrooms, the teachers will know who has or hasn't been able to access and will be able to follow up more closely.
Perfect. Thank you for answering that.
So, you know, before I go too far, I kind of want to touch upon one thing. Our goal in starting this, at least for the first coming week, is to not only focus on academics because it's very important. But right now, I think, given what's going on and the nature of the quick closure, we want to focus also on non-academic services and some of the students that we want to follow up with. I want to kind of put a huge shout out to our administrators, to our teachers, to our school adjustment councils, our special educators. I mean, everyone is going to have a part in reaching out to families. And so we feel that's really important. And we're working to get the... And in many cases, because we're so well-stationed with our one-to-one at the high school, who does a lot of work online, and our one-to-one with the iPads or access to one-to-one. Our students are really well-stationed to begin some work digitally. But we don't want to forget that there's other things that we're really concerned about. You'll hear from me on my next slide about our lunch, breakfast, and lunch distribution. We want to make sure that our councils are able to reach out to our kids, that our kids are able to reach out to the teachers if they're having any struggles. So this is a kind of a scary time for grownups. And, you know, we think we want to make sure that we can reassure our kids that, you know, we're here and things will be great. I've seen some of the most amazing videos of principals giving tours of the school in case kids were missing their school. Mrs. Montivecki and Mrs. Taylor sent out some Twitter videos. So we're really trying to focus on keeping in touch because I think social isolation is something that we want to keep in mind. And while this website is great, we hope it's a tool that will bring the school community back together again and give people that sense of belonging and understanding that, you know, we are Beverly schools, right? And so that's a main goal of ours with the website as well. All right. So that's the website. I could go on, but the website's really big and people can explore the website on their own. I sent it out as a link in a Connect Ed message. It is also, if anyone has not seen it, it's, there's a banner at the top of our BeverlySchools.org webpage. So you can simply go to the BeverlySchools.org webpage and link right into the website as well. And by now, I think it's all over Twitter and Facebook. So I don't think anyone will have trouble finding it. But if you have questions, as always with any of this, start by sending an email to your classroom teacher. If you're unable to reach them, send an email to your building principal. And if you're unable to reach them, certainly reach out to any one of us at central office because we don't want anyone to feel like they're not getting answered. So please make sure that you're reaching out through this time, especially if there's anything that you need. Oh, I know how to do it now. So I think that's about it. Is there any last questions? Oh, I do want to... I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback from the community, from parents. They're happy that we're, you know, working really hard to try to get them things. I think for families that are home for, you know, this duration, especially when the duration is unknown, it's a really nice piece for them to feel like there's some sense of normalcy back. There's some connection back to their school and back to their teacher. So we hope that that was one of our goals. We hope that we accomplish that through this. So the other, I want to talk about the report on lunch distribution. I don't, I can't say enough, Christina Liel has worked endlessly and tirelessly. She's amazing. She has put together some really awesome opportunities. We've been watching our participation throughout the week. I want to remind you that anyone under the age of 18 or younger is eligible. It doesn't matter whether you have a status or free and reduced lunch. Lunches are there and we're giving them away. And when you come for lunch, we're going to send you home with breakfast for the next day. So that's a really important thing. On Monday, that was our first day when we launched. We had only opened the high school site at that time. And we served 75 lunches, which we were surprised. We thought that was a really big turnout. On Tuesday, we served 136 lunches. We launched our remote sites so that we opened, we have three other locations besides Beverly High School, Apple Village, Goldway Park, and Holcroft Park. And in addition, if you have extenuating circumstances and you're not able to get to one of our sites, we are working with families and delivering some of our lunches directly to homes. But we ask that you really save that for extenuating circumstances because we're not Uber Eats. So we don't have the ability to do too much. And we certainly don't want anyone not getting a lunch. So we're there for that. Today, we had all three sites, all three remote sites. And the Beverly High School site opened and we served 299 lunches at those sites. So I think that's pretty amazing. Shout out to our cafeteria staff and bus drivers who are the ones that are going to the remote sites and helping with the distribution of food. Our elementary principals and all of our administrators actually out at the sites. Julie Smith was over at Holcroft Park. I think Dr. Lay was up at Goldway Park. And I think that Dr. Flaherty was over at Apple Village. So just an amazing turnout. We had Mrs. Brown up at Beverly High School. But this is the sites where we distributed our packets. So we had some hard copy packets. I also want to share that I, in my Connect Ed last night, included the PDF link for parents that they can print out those packets themselves. But we do have packets available. We distributed 131 packets. Today, we have some leftover. They will be available at Beverly High School tomorrow. That's from 10:30 to 2:30. And we'll continue to provide those packets that we have tomorrow. So anybody that is in any need for that. So any questions on lunch distribution?
I just have a quick question about the packet distribution. Are they suitable for the whole span of grade levels? Or do you have individualized packets?
They're individualized by grade level. So the kindergarten has a separate packet from first grade, a separate packet from second grade. And if you look back to the communication that I shared on March 16th, there's PDF links to all of them. So parents can take a look at those and see, and, you know, hey, no harm. If your second grader wants to do a third grade packet, I say. So that's available as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If you want to unmute your line right now? Any of the members want to ask a question about the lunch and breakfast distribution or the packets? I'm not seeing any activity there. Are we good to move on? Okay, let's move on.
All right. So I kind of call this the good news that we just did, the website and the lunches. And now here's kind of the business side of things that we have to take a look at. There are, and in here, there may be some discussion or conversation about possible action items, Rachel. So jump in at any time if you have questions about it. So I, you know, when the closure was announced, a big fear among all of our employees was, of course, oh, my goodness, will I get paid? And so we, you know, I had said to them at the time it was a two-week closure. And I felt like, you know, all right, well, we're well-stationed to take care of these two weeks. So I assured, reassured everybody, all of our employees, that yes, you know, for the duration of this closure of two weeks, you know, we will be meeting up, you know, we certainly will be paying everybody. And so that included all of our employees, our members of collective bargaining units, our individual contracts, our hourly wages, and all of those people. So I gave them reassurance that for the two weeks. However, I don't know that I have the authority going beyond. I think that really is a school committee decision. I looked for guidance from DESI regarding what we can and can't do. And the guidance is local decision. So we've been getting that a lot. So I think that's a conversation and discussion for school committee to have. But I do want to assure you that for now, Jean is running a full payroll department. All of our employees receive their full base paychecks. So that was just the base salaries that we've been, you know, assuring them. 98% of our employees receive it via direct deposit. So that was not a problem. And, you know, that's great because, again, we're trying to limit human contact. That's the whole purpose of what we're doing. And any of our live checks were mailed directly to the employees. So we didn't have a payroll office where people are coming in to get their checks. We were able to sort of meet the payroll and our obligations around that without any human contact. I am looking, I think, to the school committee for a decision regarding the continued payment. I think that, you know, that's out for you. And I think that Jean has some data if you have questions about that. But we have employees in multiple payment categories. And as I said, the guidance for now is unclear that there's any mandated decision. Right now, it stands as a local decision. And there's a DESI conference call scheduled for Friday.
Now, I think I understand from some of your earlier comments that there is a firm end date for Beverly, which would be the Thursday, June?
Yes, so that also is an action item, I think, that you have to take. Because in talking with Liz Valerio, our attorney, she said, just make sure that you get, you know, a vote from the committee. The reason that June 25th is the end date, the way that I determined it, is we had two missed days as of for the electrical windstorm that we had. We had a snow day. And then we had the Friday just before the governor required the closure. So those are four days. We were told by the Department of Ed that we did not have to extend past the 185th day of school. For us, our contracts with teachers are for 185 days. So when you look at the number of days, that would bring us to June 25th. So that's how I came up with that date. And I think the only thing I would want is just a vote from the committee that is what they, how they see the calendar as well.
One more piece of information. Are there any discussions in the DESI conference calls or with your MASs about Saturdays, about extended hour days, about canceling vacation days? Is there anything like that that we need to consider?
So that has not been mandated to us. That has not, there's none of that. I will say that what you need to be cognizant of is you have 185 days in your teacher contract. So if we are asking teachers to work to provide resources to students throughout the closure, you know, those are considered paydays for them. If we try to recoup academic instructional days any other way, we would need to keep that in mind. And then they would... we would need to keep that in mind and then they would be, you know, not working some of the days during the closure. And in addition, I think when Bethany speaks to us later about faith, we have considerations around that, around delivery of services to both our special education students and any other students that, um, that, that may not be able to access schooling in that way.
Okay, thank you.
So those are the considerations for that. Um, I've heard a lot of people ask, what about April vacation? Are we going to cancel April vacation? And, um, I, um, at this time, there are no decisions made on that. You know, we haven't made those decisions. But again, think about your contract of 185 days. So, so it gets kind of confusing.
And for all intents and purposes, we have our appropriated budget and we have our chapter 70 funds and we have our entitlements and, and grants and all of that. So.
The larger discussions that we've been having is, is how, you know, what are our expectations for employees during this time? You know, what are we asking them to do? Um, and how are we, um, you know, how are they doing? And I, I can tell you to date, I think they're, they've been working extremely hard. They've done a lot of work. Um, the, I, I'm waiting for Friday morning to hear what guidance we get around moving forward, because we are stationed. We have Google Classroom set up for all of our teachers, depending on what the guidance is. But again, I think I'm, I'm, as I keep saying to people, I'm going to wait for that conference call, because every time we have a conference call, I hear new information that I didn't have before.
I, I'm looking for people to unmute if they have questions. I'm just going to plow ahead with one more that I have. With the guidance that we can only do enrichment and reinforcement, I do wonder if at some point, the opportunities are going to be less appealing to some students. I have some anecdotal evidence from a couple of my own kids that, oh, we already did this kind of stuff before. So I, I get the reinforcement and how it's providing some of that social interaction that's so valuable. But I, I do wonder if, you know, we'll have some guidance about whether we can have instruction, new instruction. But again, we'll wait till Bethany, um, gets to that point. I think I saw, um, someone come off mute.
I think John's hand is up.
Okay, John, please.
Oh, um, thanks, Sue. And, uh, I guess my question is, um, Madam President, are we looking for a motion tonight to answer that, that payment question? I still aren't prepared to make a motion.
I, I think we do need to make a motion. I, I wonder if we need some more information before we're very specific in what our motion is. I don't know if there's some other questions. Ms. Visnick, did you have a question or were you just trying to let me know that Mr. Malady wanted to speak?
Uh, I was just trying to help you moderate.
Thank you, okay. Um, and again, if you want to come off mute for any reason, you can see that little microphone with the red slash through it. If you press that and it will turn green and your mic will be open. Not seeing any, any questions. Um, so Mr. Malady, if, if you feel that you have, um, the information to make a motion, I, I would certainly entertain a motion.
I lost all the sound for about a minute and I have these on and I think it's through my computer. So I actually don't have the information. I saw that Jean was talking, so I apologize. But I'd be disingenuous if I said I had the information.
Okay. Jean, do you want to give us some more information as a committee so that we can make an informed motion?
Sure. What I can tell you is that, um, a hourly payroll is $38,528. That's to pay, uh, the transportation drivers, monitors, crossing guards, cafeteria, and lunch monitors. The other area that we feel that we have to pay that don't have, um, like an individual contract or unit A, B, or C, is the, uh, long-term substitutes. So we have four substitutes that are covering maternity leave. So therefore they're, um, covering and they're working just like the regular teachers. And that amount, um, I estimated a duration of, just say if I went as far as April vacation, of an additional $14,000. Those are the amounts that, um, would be for weekly, the 38,000. Um, if I did a, um, calculation today, is if we went to April vacation, it would be approximately $200,000.
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Visnick?
Um, I guess I, I'm looking for a clarification, uh, based on those numbers that Jean just gave. The implication is that we, there is no question whatsoever. We are going to continue to pay our teachers. Is that true?
That is my understanding, yes.
Therefore, the motion will be only to, um, continue to pay our hourly's and our long-term subs who are not covered under a unit contract.
Yes, it would be the people that we actually enter in hours in the payroll system. The rest of the people are paid on, under either 52 pay periods, 44, 22, and 26.
And one, one last clarification. So for all such employees, until the, what was the date that you gave the end of April vacation that would cost on the order of $200,000?
Yes, I, I was anticipating to get us to April vacation and then of course, April vacation, if it's a non-work week, which is what we're assuming at this point, uh, it would be, uh, 207,319. And that would be paying just base salaries. So if somebody is normally scheduled for so many hours, you know, like, uh, crossing guards, one hour a day, two hours a day, we're basing it on what their base is.
Can I just, um, step in for a quick second? I also, I just want to also remind you that some of those hourly people are still working in our, you know, they're, they're the ones that are feeding all of the kids and delivering all of the food and doing all of those things. So some of them are actually actively still working their regular hours anyway, so.
All right, Dr. Schrocheck, I did want to add to that on, on that comment, um, comment that you just made. Is, um, looking at my listserv, that's one thing that came out today is people are asking, how are we tracking this? Just in case there is any, um, kind of money coming from FEMA or MEMR or anything like that. So that's one thing I have to look at is how do we track how many people are actually working? And how many people are, um, you know, so the.
So as of right now, Christina and Dana are tracking the people that are actually doing, you know, that are working.
Yes, yeah. Um, yeah.
Okay, so, so my question, um, to Jean, and maybe you don't know, since your question indicates that Dana and Christina are tracking this, is, are any of our current employees exceeding their regularly scheduled hours? You talked about base salary being the assumption, but do we owe people more time?
No.
Hey, Mr. Malady, if, if you are not going to unmute and make a motion, I will.
I think you're, I think you're, I just want to see if my kid was asleep. He's not.
Welcome to Zoom.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm okay with someone else who, uh, is better at speaking than me make the motion. I think we all have the same sentiment, but I don't know how to word it properly so we're not in trouble or anything like that. So I'm going to go back to me.
Uh, Dr. Schrocheck, I'm kind of thinking two things that can be done here. This is all uncharted, um, territory for us anyhow. Is, do we have a vote that says that as long as the governor is saying that schools not to be in session? Or do we just, uh, open-ended? Or that's where I'm not sure.
So I, I mean, you know, we don't, right now, we think we're reopening on, on April 6th, right? I don't know whether, what that, what's going to happen beyond then. So maybe a motion to cover us till April 6th and then a new motion to cover us if it gets extended even longer than that. I mean, if, if people are comfortable with that or however you want to word it. But, um, I, I, um, I do know that we have a lot of people who are anxious and, um, you know, are looking for that. So, and I, I mean, so I can say that, you know, if, if we were to open on April 6th, that would be a deadline. Um, I mean, I'm not, that's not, I, I don't think that's as realistic as it looked five days ago. But we'll have to just see.
Okay, Madam President?
Go ahead, Ms. Visnick.
Um, it's possible for us to have another meeting as April 6th approaches and we have a better idea of whether we're going to reopen or not, correct? So we don't have to make both those motions at this moment in time?
Indeed. I anticipate that we will have another meeting, um, before the end of March. I'm hoping that people are, are sort of reserving that April 30th, or sorry, March 30th date. We're also waiting for DESE guidance on the SOA funds form that remember we were supposed to approve for Dr. Schrocheck by April 1st. So I do suspect we will be meeting again and hopefully we'll perfect this, this, uh, of remote participation by then.
We're really, we're really not doing that poorly, to be honest with you. I don't think, based on the fact that, um, you know, this is what you and I do for a living, but I don't think other people do. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we, the Beverly Public School District continues to pay our hourly workers and our long-term subs up to, uh, the date of reopening, which is right now scheduled to be April 6th.
At their regular.
At their regular base pay.
Yep.
Second.
Just writing that down. And since we are remote participation, we are going to do a roll call vote for this. And I understand Ms. Ferretti's audio is not picking up her mic, so we're going to do a thumbs up when we get to her. And we will work that out. Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Visnick for the Beverly Public School District to continue to pay hourly and long-term subs until the April 6th date at their regular base pay. And we have a second from Mr. Malady. By roll call vote, we'll start with Ms. Ferretti. If you could give us a big thumbs up in your view. Okay, that is a yes. Ms. Visnick?
Yes, and I think you're going to have to manually unmute Kim or let her give the thumbs up as well.
Okay, um, let's see, Kim, I'm going to unmute you and, and I see your thumbs up. So we're hearing you now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to mute you again because there is some background noise there. Oh goodness, where'd you go? Sorry about that. There's so many people on the list. I'm used to just like five or six participants. And we have John Malady.
Yes.
Yes, big thumbs up. Rachel Abel is a yes. And Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for figuring out the unmute there. So with six voting in the affirmative, Mayor Cahill, you've not joined us yet. We do have one mystery guest, Mark. I don't know who that is. If anyone wants to identify themselves, that would be welcome. And we have passed a motion for the Beverly Public School District to continue to pay hourly and long-term subs until April 6th at the regular base pay.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. And I know our employees, thank you for that. So that's awesome. Um, the other items on this, um, particular slide in, involve full-day kindergarten and pre-K tuitions. Not sure, um, you know, they're not coming to school right now. So I thought I would just at least bring it to your attention. That might be something that in the future you might need to be thinking, you might need to think about or address. And then also, I think Jean put building rentals fees, um, because they also were not allowing them in our building right now too. So that would be revenue that, so those are just, you know, two areas of revenue to keep in mind that, um, may be, be something that you'll need to be considering as we move forward. All right? So now on to extended closure. So, um, you know, here's, I'm going to give you what I know, which, there's a lot of I don't knows, um, but I, I will give you what I think I know. So right now, we know that we are, uh, following the governor's order, which is that we're closed until April 6th. Some cities, Boston and Everett, have already declared that they're going to be out for longer periods of time. And some states, Kansas, has closed for the remainder of the year. And Connecticut has that same idea under consideration. 72 hours ago, I would have said, you're kidding me. Like, that's not even anything I would think about. But now I'm, I'm not so sure. We have, you know, there, there's, and I'm not saying that because I have any sneaking suspicion or inside information. I'm just saying that as I watch the landscape and everything that's happening, I, I just don't think we have an idea right now at what the length of this closure is going to be. And so there are a lot more unknowns than there are knowns as we go forward. So I'm going to, we sort of, and, and many thanks to Dot on this one. We, we sort of thought about what are some of the impacts that this is having on our, um, on education and on our families in general. And we want to keep in mind that, you know, not only are they not getting their reading lesson or finishing that writing project, but, you know, for many, the loss of human and social interactions is really, has a really big impact. So we are trying to be very, very mindful of some of those non-academic services that students were accessing at school and, um, thinking about ways to connect. And thus, our Beverly Keeps Learning website. So we believe that what Beverly Keeps Learning website will be a great vehicle to deliver academic services. But our greater hope is that it will provide, uh, connections for our kids and connections for our, our staff, because this is a very challenging time for a lot of people. We're focusing right now on enrichment and strengthening of current knowledge and skills. And we're, um, we are asking teachers to, um, create activities that will do just that. We have some very, um, excited and dedicated teachers that we're trying to rein in a little. They're, they're ready to go. They're ready to rocket. They want their kids to have. For, I, I, I think it's important for everyone to understand that some of our teachers were in the middle of some really awesome project-based learning with their kids. They were in the middle of great, uh, writing activities, uh, things that they had really set up and had teed up to go. And so for them, I think they're, they had, they're getting requests from their own students, you know, well, can I finish this right now? Can you just open up my paper so that I can keep writing? And, and so we're, we're, we're juggling, um, the need to remain true to what the legislative regulatory compliance that we have to have is and our teachers who want to just keep rocking and some of our students who do. Um, and again, Bethany is going to talk to us a little bit more about the legal implications that as school committee, you really have to understand and maybe share with people if, if there's any pushback on that. We, we hope to expand the learning to include progression of skills. The commissioner alluded to in our last conference, that, you know, they would love to be able to do that as well. But, you know, it's going to take some relief and waivers from federal guidelines for us to be able to do that. So, um, we're waiting on that and I'm, uh, anxiously awaiting our Friday morning conference call. In addition, there's a huge, um, level of angst among our, um, high school students who, you know, waited all year to play their sport or, um, their senior prom. And, and, you know, so we're really trying to figure out how we can mitigate some of that for them and what that's going to be like. And again, because that length of closure is unknown, these are really, really big impacts for a lot of our kids. So, um, you know, I, I urge all parents to be patient with your child. This is hard for them, um, as well. And as, as much as a brave face they're putting on, they have a lot of big questions too. So, um, those are, that's really, I think, an important thing for all of us to keep in mind.
I, I have a quick question. What responsibility do we have for, um, recognizing kids are using the athletic fields? I think I saw a lot of lacrosse players at the high school today. I've seen people using the middle school turf. Are, I mean, I don't think that we have any shelter-in-place orders from the governor, but I, I think that we've tried to reinforce the fact that our, our athletes really shouldn't be, you know, doing the contact sports and, and being up in close.
You know, I, that's a great question, Rachel. And, you know, I, it's one I've received many emails about. Um, a lot of people, you know, and I, and I, um, responded almost each time with a new tweet or a new, um, you know, Facebook post reminding our parents and families that it's not going to do any good for us to close the schools if the kids just go outside and run in packs, right? The whole idea of this is to negate that social interaction. And, you know, it runs against everything that any teen, tween, or even young child want right now. But if we, if, you know, we really have to band together, um, it's going to make a huge difference. In terms of our, um, our facilities, um, I, I will continue to push out. But remember, we, we're, we don't have a lot of people in our buildings right now. So it's not like there are people are all hanging around. And once, once noon tomorrow comes, we're really locking the doors and we're not going to be in the building. So we're going to have to ask the, the community to help us with that. Um, I will continue to reiterate that in my messages to parents. And, uh, teachers have also jumped on board and in their Google Classroom and in their messages that they're sending out, they're really trying to emphasize that. I've seen a couple of adorable videos that some of the teachers have put together to remind kids with social distancing means and, and what that's supposed to do. So, and that said, uh, you know, I mean, I, you're right, we're not in a state of, um, like, I mean, I don't, I don't know whether it's a policing effort or, uh, you know, anything. It's really, I think, we're really counting on each other. or, uh, you know, anything. It's really, I think, we're really counting on each other as a community and as families to kind of do our part and um, and do what we need to do to try to make that happen.
And one more, just quick consideration. I remember on our learning walk, seeing the mummification projects in the sixth grade. And I I know those are in process. I hope that somebody has the thought to get rid of those.
Funny, I saw Mike Parker wondering what the smell was this today, so I might have to check on that. I might have to have him go check that one.
You certainly should, because they are mid-stink right now, because I know.
I have to tell you, that one, there were just so many really rich projects. The high school, they have a research project, and I got a a couple of emails from parents saying, you know, my child was told to continue their research project. How is that enrichment? And I I believe that that's really just, oh my goodness, we've just jumped off into this amazing project. And how do, you know, in a way that is enrichment, right? And so I I, but I will, I just wanna um ensure all parents that watch, we are not taking attendance during these days. Your child is is not the work that's, we're not asking them to submit work to be graded at this time, because these are not considered instructional days. So, um, we'll get back to that more when Bethany talks about this one slide that I have here. But any other questions around the social distancing or, or I should say, any other ideas about what we can do to help families? And, um, you know, it's kind of like the idea about social media too, right? Like, we know parents need to police kids on social media, but it's not as easy to do, right? And so if there are families that are struggling with social dis, you know, enforcing the social distancing, maybe some ideas to help them with that or, you know, ways to reach out.
Dr. Flaherty, you'd like to say something?
Yes, I just want to add on the Beverly Keeps Learning, the parent resource page. We did put a great um video on there that um is a great discussion around social distancing and the importance of it for um doing it with all of your students. So it's it's a pretty good video if people wanna check that out. We wanted to make sure that.
Which one is it?
Parents, it says social distancing on the bottom. Right there.
Okay.
Yeah, this one right here.
Yep, talking to kids about social distancing.
Thanks, Dot.
Do we have any more questions before we ask Ms. Blansky to speak? Okay, Ms. Blansky, unmuted, your line for you.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, so there are many, many considerations with how all this impacts special education, and it's a very complicated and far-reaching issue. And so I've tried to kind of boil it down to some top considerations. The first is that when a school district is closed in a circumstance like this and does not provide any educational services to the general student population, um, we're not required to provide services to students with disabilities. Um, and this is really important, because under normal circumstances, um, students with disabilities are provided, they have an entitlement to a free and appropriate public education, which we refer to as FAP. Um, and this is an entitlement that students have during a time when we're not providing instruction to any students. The students with with disabilities do not have that same entitlement to FAP. Um, and that's important in terms of the legal ramifications that we could find ourselves in. So when you think about special education, there's a very wide continuum of services that we provide. Um, on one end, we have, you know, students who receive very small amounts of related services only or small amounts of support. On the other end of the spectrum, we have students who receive very, very highly specialized services, services for students who are visually impaired and blind, services for students who are extremely medically fragile, services for students who are very mentally ill and behaviorally challenged, and students, services for students who require residential support. And so for those students, um, it would be impossible for us to provide FAP during a time when we're not providing um instruction and where we can't have face-to-face contact with students. So, um, that's the first consideration. As Dr. Trocheck.
Can I jump in on that one?
Sure.
Because that, because that one sounds awful, doesn't it? Like, who wants to say we don't, well, okay, well, we're not, we don't have to give uh any of those services if we don't do this, but that's not the goal. But the idea is that logistically, realistically, we we can't, right? And so we're in violation if we do. So that one always makes me kind of cringe, and yet it's something that, from a legal standpoint and the commissioner, and and no one is saying we don't want to do that, but we need to figure, we can't, we we need to figure out how we could possibly do that or what we would be able to do. So, um, I just, I just wanted to say, I didn't like the sound of it when I put it on the slide, but by the same token, it's the reality, so.
Right, right. And again, it's it's not out of lack of wanting to support our students. Obviously, we all want to do whatever we can in a situation to help our students, but it opens us up to um very challenging situation for students for whom we simply can't meet the needs. We can't provide the level of specialized support that students require um in a situation like this. Along those same lines, we need to make decisions based on consideration of equity. And Dr. Trocheck spoke a little bit about this earlier, but, um, you know, as as you just said, Dr. Trocheck, it it feels uncomfortable to say that because we're not required to, that we shouldn't provide services, but it's also from an equity standpoint that we can't provide for some and not for all. And so it would be, you know, really inequitable for us to provide some services to some students and then not to meet the needs of other students. And you know, as parents, um, parents have the needs of their own child at heart and, um, you know, want to make sure that their own child's needs are met. So, um, it it's, it's all or it's none really from an equity standpoint.
And I'm gonna just jump in again too. So one, we've tried to address that somewhat, at least in our Beverly Keeps Learning site. So we have made an enormous effort to make sure that in our choice boards for our enrichment activities, we're addressing all of our populations and providing um in any way that we can, resources that we think will meet the needs of as all of our learners in the in the best way that we can. So, um, that was, we we were very careful about doing that and very thoughtful, which is, um, I think a testament to our educators here in Beverly who um really, really understand and um want to do what's right, so.
Right, and I also want to point out, just in terms of the um, the provision of enrichment activities, our special education teachers are doing everything in their power to make sure that they are supporting their students and providing access to students to the greatest extent possible. So it doesn't mean that we aren't um supporting students, it just means that we are not able to provide specialized instruction based on students' IEPs, because the IEPs are not in effect um during this time. Um, the third consideration is around communication with families. This is a very confusing time. Um, the the issues at stake are really complicated. Um, and I think families have a lot of questions about how their entitlement applies or doesn't apply in a situation like this. And so, um, it's a difficult situation to navigate. It doesn't feel good um to say no to people, but it's, we also have to do what's um, what's fair and equitable for everybody involved. Um, the fourth consideration is around compliance and timelines. Um, in special education, our work is very carefully regulated by timelines and the timelines are just simply going to be impacted by the fact that school is closed. Um, most of the timelines are based on school days, and so timelines such as special education evaluation timelines, meeting timelines, annual reviews, um, all are going to be impacted. For right now, where things are essentially on hold, and as we get more of a sense of how long the closure will go, we'll make decisions about how to move forward um i- in the best way that we can. We've been given reassurance from the Department of Education that we will not be held to unreasonable standards. Um, the regulations are all still in effect, but obviously we are, our hands are tied in some ways logistically with needing those timelines.
Thanks, Bethany.
You're welcome.
Now I've muted myself and I couldn't unmute. Is there any questions from the audience? Just raise your hand in the video channel if you need help unmuting. People adjusting their glasses and their hair don't seem to be raising their hands. Okay, I I think we're good on this slide.
All right, um, so, um, going fast and it didn't, all right. So, um, and then this is just sort of more continuation of the extended closure. So, um, the educational impact, the other things that it's going to impact, we have building schedules and rosters and class lists and transitions that are essential. In September of 2020, believe it or not, this is the time that we do those things. This is the time that we're doing scheduling at the high school and at the middle school. We um, we will work very hard to see how we can turn that into virtual opportunities for us. But if you think about, in in the high school, you're doing your selection of courses. Um, you may be talking with guidance, you're deciding what you're gonna do. Um, at at the elementary level, the teachers are coming together, making the class lists for the coming year. And these things all typically transpire, um, usually very heavily at the end of March and the beginning of April, because then we kind of go get to April vacation and then we're in full MCAS mode after that. So, um, and let's not, MCAS isn't on here, did you notice? Because I'm avoiding that at all costs. No, um, I, we just, we don't have, there's no, there's no information right now. I would say that in our conversations, it seems like it's it's on the minds of everyone. So I I would assume that, um, there'll be some um flexibilities at minimum um in terms of MCAS testing. We already missed the uh grade 10 ELA in math test, which was scheduled for, I think, the 24th. So, um, it it's just a big mess, whether it's gonna be postponed, whether it's gonna be canceled, there'll be a lot of conversation. Um, I, it's one of those others that I don't really know. So, um, and then I I discussed already the calendar and I don't, I, the question was, do we need, I should have wrote, do we need action on the calendar? I'm not really sure. Um, but Liz just wanted me to make sure the school committee was aware that that June 25th date is our date, given the number of days that we had so far. Um, and I think a lot, you know, I guess if we're thinking that we can get together again on the 30th, then we might want to wait and hear what the governor and the commissioner have to say. In my, we can't go beyond the 26th day. Um, and actually technically, we can't go beyond the 25th day legally, because the government commissioner has declared that all schools will end on their 185th day. So that would be us, that's our 185th day. So, um, just throwing it out there, making sure everybody was aware of it. Um, in terms of business, you know, the kind of stuff, the budgety business stuff. The budget, we are, Jean and I, every once in a while, say, are we gonna do budget lately, anytime soon? Um, we've been a little tied up with some of these other things, but, um, the budget, I think the process needs to move forward. We'll need to have more discussions on that. I don't have any update for you tonight on budget, because we've been tied up with all of these other things in the meantime. Grant submissions and the SOA submission, I have not officially heard, but the commissioner alluded to a, an extension on that SOA beyond the April 1st date in light of what's going on and what schools are being asked to do right now. Um, I have not heard a date, and I believe Friday morning I'll have some guidance on that. Uh, we talked about payroll, um, hiring, and we were in the midst of the middle school principal search. That's on hold right now, um, largely because we're not allowed to get together and meet. We're gonna regroup and and have some recommendations maybe in the coming month or so of how we can get back on track for that. I I, the book, many unanswered questions, there really are, like, when there's a list, I met with the union. I met with Julia and Teddy, who's the representative from the union. We had a uh meeting on, I don't even know which day, one of the days this week. We did it via Zoom, and it was very exciting. The our, we are extremely fortunate that we have a very strong relationship with our union and, um, we have, uh, you know, open conversations and a lot of transparency. So it was a good conversation. They have a lot of concerns, as do we. In particular, the hourly, um, the hourly wage uh employees, um, we talked about that a lot. And, um, so, um, there are a lot of questions about evaluations, questions about, uh, you know, all of those things that would be typically being addressed in the spring and what does this mean for those? And my answer was, I don't know yet. We'll find out. When we find out more, we'll let you know. Jean in the business department, need, are required to continue to pay our bills and do all of those things. So she's uh got a group of people, some working remotely, um, only coming in when necessary. Jean, I don't know if you want to speak to that or not?
Uh, sure. Um, yeah, what we have, uh, people coming, I want to make sure that we don't have too many people in here at one time also. But I have my payroll people coming in and accounts payable. Now, I did send out something to the school committee about, uh, Rachel and I had discussed suspending, um, the school committee, um, signing the warrants. Now, we don't have the authority to say forever, but we will have to have people go into City Hall at some point and sign the ones that we've processed or come up with some kind of plan if this is too um long of a duration to have people coming and sign. But right now, we did process uh this week's warrants with just my signature.
And I don't know if it's if it's possible, Jean, but I had a conversation with Ed Gleason about uh using DocuSign, which is an ability to sign, and I don't know if legally you can't do that for a warrant or you could, but you know, there are ways for some of those things to happen. I'm sure some of you business people have used them in your business worlds, so.
Right, I mean, some districts, they actually make photocopies of the, you know, a scanned copy of everything and send it out, but it's just very tedious to be copying little receipts and trying to get everything in one. So I think if we can get, you know, people to go into City Hall after, um, and sign up to catch us up, that would be great. There is a lot of talk on the uh DESE listserv for the Masbo in talking about paying vendors. Um, so that's one thing I'm looking forward to hear from, um, Jay Sullivan on Friday when we have our conference call about what can be paid. So we're in a good situation of having our own bus company, um, whereas other districts, they have an agreement with the uh transportation firm and what can they legally pay? Whereas we have our own employees. Uh, but there is a lot of, you know, areas that we have to look at to see, you know, what can we pay? And, um, you know, um, special education is one of those that I'm sure Bethany, um, you know, is hearing on her groups too of what can be paid. So that's, we're looking for um guidance from them and, you know, to see what we can, you know, legally do.
I I think you just actually raised a question in my mind, you know, with our out-of-district placements. I'm assuming all schools are closed and do, do we still have tuition payments due or is it attendance? Let me unmute you, Bethany, just a moment. I really am clicking unmute. I don't know why. It's, there we go, slow.
Um, so we are still waiting for some guidance on that, but at this point, what we've heard from the Department of Education is that, you know, thinking long-term, our big concern is that we want to make sure that these programs are open and available to meet the needs of our students when this whole crisis is over. And so, you know, just as our employees are continuing to be paid, they have employees who also are continuing to be paid. Um, and we are, you know, obviously, holding spots for students in those programs. And so, um, nothing has come out definitively, but it sounds to me like the department is um leaning toward having the the tuitions continue to be paid for fear that if we don't, um, that programs will not be able to survive and then we'll have kind of a bigger problem um when when all this is done. The other thing that they're looking at is how this will impact circuit breaker reimbursement, because there is um a stipulation with circuit breaker that if students are not present for 20 days or more, that we cannot claim that time for circuit breaker reimbursement. Um, and I suspect that that will probably be lifted in this case. They're working on that from um, from a legislative standpoint now. Um, but it sounds to me like they're leaning toward having the tuitions continue to be paid, but also allowing districts to claim circuit breaker on those payments.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Do I see it?
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say if I saw any other hands, but go ahead, Dr. Trocheck.
I I was just gonna finish up on the last bullet here, just, um, so, uh, uh, again, tremendous gratitude amount of, the amount of work that our custodians have done, starting from three weeks ago when we were nightly cleaning, uh, bringing in, um, Distech, our outside cleaning companies, to even just walking around and and wiping down all of our touchpoints and really working hard while our students were still in school to keep our buildings clean, to when the students left, to a deep clean that they've done in the building. Our plan right now is, uh, they're in summer mode, so they're kind of addressing the cleaning needs as if it were summer and getting to some waxing of some floors and getting to some um of the cleaning areas that that we, you know, need to do. I had a conversation today with Mike Parker. I will be talking soon with Mike Collins to determine, you know, at what point, you know, what are we doing and what's the plan moving forward? So, um, as of right now, though, our custodians are working the summer hours and they're cleaning the buildings down and making sure they're they're really getting to all the cleaning. I think that's all I have. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Visnick, can you unmute yourself before?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks.
I didn't know if anybody else holding the hand up, so I didn't want to assume that I would get the floor. I wonder, Dr. Trocheck, if there has been any conversation yet around, um, the sequencing? So if we in fact missed three weeks or four weeks, or goodness gracious, help us more than that, we expect, uh, for instance, a rising third grader to step into fourth grade with a certain base of knowledge. And clearly, we're not going to be able to catch up the multiple weeks of missed instruction. So, um, has there been any, any planning yet around, um, kind of like resetting the beginning? kind of like resetting the beginning spot for next year, right? We expect that every student will come in a little lower than what we expected because of the mislearning.
So I think that I've heard.
Dot's her hand up, too, when you.
Okay. Well, I'll let Dot go first. I always, I'll always yield the floor to Dr. Flaherty.
I was just gonna add, that actually is a conversation that we were having, especially around the elementary principals, while we were working on some of the website information yesterday. And knowing that usually at the beginning of each school year, there's a short amount of time, maybe three or four weeks, where there's kind of a recap of the year before and making sure that skills are where we need them. And that if we go much longer than the, than the three weeks that we have right now, I think if we go back on April 6th, I think our teachers, between the enrichment that they're giving them and some of the, the information they have planned to go out on their, their, through their Google classrooms and the rest of the school year, I think that, that our kids will still be really in good shape to move forward and know what we need them to know. That the teachers will really hone in on those focus skills. If we go much longer than the April 6th, there will have to be a period of time, probably a six-week time at the beginning of the year, where we're doing almost a review and finishing up those skills that, that they should have had before they can be ready to move on to new instruction. So there isn't a hard plan in place yet, but it is conversations that we are already having.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any show of hands for other questions? I can unmute people's lines. Don't see any, okay?
All right, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Ms. Visnick?
Not, I don't think it's anything on the slide, so if you want to stop. Dr. Trocheck, you certainly can. But I, I believe there was a question that came in through email about, well, let me, let me phrase it a different way. We, you just said, we need to continue payroll processing and we need to continue to pay our vendors. And there are certain things we need to continue to do. But what about from a parent's point of view? Where schools not in, what are the expectations around our parents and their monetary obligations? So for instance, if I'm renting, if I'm leasing, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word there. If I'm leasing a laptop or if I'm paying a kindergarten fee, I don't know, any other kind of fee that, that a parent might be paying. Clearly, we're not doing sports yet, we're not doing spring sports. But if we do, in fact, reinstate, right? If we get back in school and we're going to do a modified spring sport schedule, would the fees be reduced because there would be a shorter schedule? Right, all those kinds of payment things from a parent point of view. Can you address any or all of those?
So I, I did have on the slide the kindergarten and the preschool. I think that that's different than the laptop. I would say that our students will be using their laptops more than ever. So I don't think that the laptops will not be used in terms of educationally or for what they were leasing them for. But that, I believe, is a school committee decision and conversation that you guys would need to decide how you want to manage that and what you, what it looks like from your standpoint. I think, you know, we, we, I don't even know. I think the date for spring sports starting is very late, like, you know, in April, so. But there's been no, I think those are all unanswered questions among the people that I confer with, the superintendent's roundtable. And we haven't had any direct guidance or anything from the Department of Ed on that.
Ms. Quelo, you're unmuted. Nope, you're unmuted.
Um, Dr. Trocheck, so to piggyback on what Lorinda was saying, is I've had several constituents in my area who have freshmen and sophomores at the high school who are struggling because it's, do they use their $150 to buy food? Do they use their $150 to put towards bills? Or do they make sure that laptop's going to be paid in two weeks on the first?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's a huge concern that I'm dealing with right now as well.
Yeah, I understand. So I, I mean, I, I believe that's, so I, and Rachel, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I would assume that fees are on the purview of the school committee, right? And so I'm looking for direction from the school committee as far as that would go.
Indeed. I, I, I do appreciate the sentiments that Ms. Quelo and Ms. Visnick have, have put forth about, you know, are we looking at reducing fees, returning fees, you know, that sort of thing? I, I do feel with the mandate just till April 6th that, you know, we're not entirely sure how long this is going to go on and we don't want to, you know, overturn the, the apple cart too soon. But at the same time, maybe when we have more guidance after Friday's call with the superintendents and with the Business Office Association, we could add this to our next agenda. I don't, I don't know that we have enough information this evening to make any decisions about restructuring our fees, but it is definitely something that the school committee sets. Ms. Visnick?
So I think that wearing my hat to cover some of my rapidly graying hair, wearing my Chair of FNF hat, I would say that I think that are the totality of not just our budget, but the city's budget, the state's budget, right? Our federal budget, there are a ton of things in the air right now. And we certainly hear, well, if you're paying attention to the news, you may hear that there are conversations around maybe not debt forgiveness, but like being, putting debt on hold or perhaps a federal infusion of funds into the pockets of certain individuals based on their income levels, right? So I think it is very early to talk about this. However, I think that it's good that we started to talk about it. There are people who are worried about it and that, that worry is just going to continue and somewhat like our, our lunch program. And I would like to give a huge tip of my cap. Christina jumped on the call Sunday night around food security and I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Trocheck. All of those concerns, I think, are unfortunately just going to continue and, and to get worse as our social distancing requirement continues. And there are people who just can't work from home, whose jobs are going away. And the ripple effect will be felt long and hard, unfortunately. So how much we can quote-unquote "afford" to do is separate and distinct from how much any given individual is going to be able to afford to pay. And so I think we're going to have to have some very tough conversations about that moving forward, including but not limited to resetting what we expect on our revenue side just from a unfortunate, realistic point of view.
Yeah, I think Dr. Trocheck's slide indicated our building rental revolving is one of those accounts that we use to supplement our appropriated budget. And, and that may be something that we, we can't, if we're not giving access, for instance, to one of our largest renters, we can't justify taking their revenue either. So it remains to be seen, I think. Anyone else? Now that the screen's not sharing, everyone's video is appearing separately and I'm looking around, no hands. Dr. Trocheck, did you need the committee to go into executive session to have any further discussions about your meeting with the teachers' union? Or did you need any direction from us tonight? Or is that no longer needed? Oh, I muted you, I'm sorry.
I, I think that the, the, the main thing that I had been thinking about at the time was the hourly wage. I think looking to April 6th and then making another decision. And I don't know if at that point it's something that needs to be in. I think, I, I think we just put that in as, we were, I know, I was unsure how the whole Zoom meeting was going to go. And so I think we put it in as a placeholder to make sure that we had it if we needed it. So I don't have anything beyond that. That was just my, it was there in case we needed it.
Okay. So I believe we've received all the superintendent updates. Do we have any last questions from our committee members for the superintendent? If not, I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Malady. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn this remote participation meeting of the Beverly School Committee, Committee of the Whole, on March 18th, 2020, by roll call vote. Ms. Freddie, I keep seeing you have a microphone and then don't. Let me try to unmute that line and see if you can give us a yes. Oh, there you are!
All right, there I am.
Okay, so Ms. Freddie is a yes, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mayor Cahill, have you joined us? I don't think I see him, absent. Ms. Quelo? Thumbs up, there we go, okay. And Rachel Abel, yes. Okay, we are now adjourned. This meeting has been recorded and we will endeavor to have it on our district website just as soon as humanly possible. It needs to render. I appreciate everyone for joining us.
Yeah, can I say an extra special thank you to all the administrators who joined to, to be present? So I appreciate that. I, I don't know, I can't say enough. They have been amazing and remarkable, and we say that all the time, but I don't think it's possible to say it enough, so I appreciate them.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too.